Any public comments?
There's none, Your Honor.
Okay. Do we have any remarks? Okay, the first item is the vendor's list.
Yes, those kind of things I can approve.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve, discussion? All in fair, please aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the claims.
Yes, Judge, I have two sets of vendor claims, two set of lists.
Okay.
For approval, one set is one that I like to follow that should be paid out. My second set, highlighted in yellow, goes for the second set of claims that we need additional funding. But I guess I'm gonna wait until agenda, I don't know any better.
Okay.
Based on the amount of, if you'll count the loan that I received, I'll go with maybe the second set.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Take it.
Moved and second to approve, discussion? All in fair, please aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We do have a presentation this morning from the Rio Grande Valley MPO. Mr. Medina, good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Michael. Is this on? Can everybody hear?
It's only for the cameras.
Oh, okay. Good morning. My name is Michael Medina and I'm the Executive Director of the Rio Grande Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization. And we're here before you two to give a presentation is that we just completed a 30-day public comment period. And with that 30-day public comment period, we are required under federal law to develop every four to five years a metropolitan transportation plan. And this is our 20-at-a-minimum-year plan that incorporates all of the transportation projects that the Policy Board approves. We are the steward of the federal and the state dollars that are assigned to Techstock. And so we have the fiduciary responsibility to ensure that the contracts that are approved by Techstock, meaning any type of project that you may all have, are part of that federal procurement requirement. And so we wanted to give you all a representation of what the MPO staff did to ensure that we were meeting all the federal requirements. And part of these requirements, like I mentioned, it requires us to have a four-to-five-year plan every, so often, for a minimum of 20 years. Along with that, we are required to do a 10-year plan. That 10-year plan, along with the long-range plan, has to be fiscally and financially constrained. At the state level, there's something called the Unified Transportation Program. That is a 10-year plan that is governed by Techstock. In that plan, it prescribes the amount of money that the MPO is going to receive. Within that 10-year plan, on an annual basis, we receive about $32.5 million. And so collectively, we're about 400 and something million in terms of the investment. In the 10-year plan, there's a four-year short-range plan, where is the real money that we program. And so again, we get about $32.5 million a year. And I think one of the things that I wanted to highlight, I've been here for about a year now, and I met with the judge back then to understand what the dynamics were in terms of the incorporation of Starr County into the MPO. So further, those that may not know is that the MPO is comprised of three counties. So we have this county, we have Hidalgo County, and of course Cameron County. And so the MPO's responsibility is to ensure that all the federal money that is assigned through Techstock to the MPO gets programmed. And so one of the things that I like to highlight is that when I appeared here initially about a year ago, I understood that the MPO was not meeting the federal requirements as per the plans. Okay, so what I mean by that is that in the short-range plan, we were over-programmed in two fiscal years for about $150 million. So essentially is that if you have $32.5 million that is solely available for a year, the Policy Board, right, this goes back, the incorporation of the MPO happened about five years ago. So you had three MPOs that merged. You had Brownsville, you had Harjens San Benito, and of course Hidalgo MPO, Hidalgo County MPO. Part of the merger, the Policy Board at the time didn't identify what was the regional significance. So that is a definition of what the Policy Board says, these are the projects that we understand to receive the federal aid, right? And there's other parameters with that that come on board. But the important thing is that because you had three MPOs that were merging, there was no consensus of how we're going to define what the regional priorities are, right? So collectively, it's like you're making a cake and everybody wants to throw the ingredients, hoping that the cake comes out at the end. And so part of that is our fiscal constraint and requirements aren't being met. But in short, what we had done is that we had developed a process of identifying not only the priorities, but ensuring that the projects that are nominated through the MPO are not only programmed, but are meeting the thresholds. So part of these requirements is that we now require, if there is a call for projects that we normally have, that a project request form be submitted to the MPO. Along with that is a commitment by the agency, sponsoring agency as we call it, in terms of a fiscal plan of how they're funding their project, resolution as well. From all this information we receive, we developed a project readiness report. It will assess where the project really is going to be. And then from there, a project, forgive me, the project schedule. So the idea now is that when a sponsoring agency requests information from, or funding from the Policy Board, is that we're able to track exactly where that project could be programmed, right? The idea here is to ensure, not only to the Policy Board, but also to the state and the federal partners, that as we start to develop these projects, they will hit the ground running, if you will. So what we did, just as a background, is that we utilized the 24-month waiting schedule of Techstock. The practice here is that projects were being developed at the local level, which is allowed, correct? However, when Techstock is not involved in terms of the project development, Techstock has no way of verifying that everything that has been done up to that part before it goes to construction has been done. So essentially, what the Policy Board has done is that they have allowed for us to ask for all these forms of, if you will, requirements to make sure that the project is programmed in the appropriate year, and then it moves forward. Does anybody have any questions regarding?
Do you have any handouts or anything as to what's being proposed, so that the Commissioners can be aware of?
So, are we?
For Starr County?
Just bring them out to the presentation.
Okay.
Okay, you weren't able to get the?
No.
Okay.
So.
Okay, yeah, just something so that, you know, in case they want to?
Sure. No, yeah.
Have any input?
Just if you have the ability. Right. And part of that, the presentation, the handouts that you receive, you'll see examples of what we've done. And what is far more important is a project readiness report. Because every quarter now, the Policy Board will receive a report by the MPO staff. We will review everybody's project to include Techstock. So we are no longer looking at the projects as a functionality of funding. We look at all projects to ensure that they're meeting the requirements. That way, in the event that we have to move a project, the Policy Board is fully aware. And so one of the things that I'd just like to demonstrate is that at the state level, there's what we call the 200% tack rule. And so this rule, what it says is that if we're over-capacity on our funding at the MPO level, beyond 200%, the state can dip in, if you will, to the pot of money that the district has here. So there's different types of funding categories that we have. This one is very specific, is category two, which is what the district engineer uses to develop his projects here. If we're over the 200%, the state can dip into that pot of money and then shift it for what we call safety projects, okay? Now, the thing about that is that not only are we over-capacity on our money, which we call the category seven, then that money or those projects have to move out, outside of that first plan that I talked about, the 10-year plan. So essentially, what I'm saying is that we have to monitor our projects to include the Techstock projects, because if we don't, the likelihood, and it's happened, where the district has to move a project that could have been delivered this year, or this fiscal year, out, 11 years out, right? And there's rules within Techstock that require them to do that. So, because they're beyond the threshold. So what we're trying to do is that if Techstock has a project, or anybody has a project, that we understand is going to overrun, or that at the state level, there is a funding cap that we inform the Policy Board to make sure that those type of projects are not out of the system anymore. Because it will require, at the state level, for the Techstock Commission to come back and say, yeah, that project will be moving forward, but it's always a cycle, correct? And so when the Commission takes action, it's normally a year after. So we lose time, but I think more importantly is that we lose the project.
Bless you. You know, one of the things that I would like to comment, especially for the people that are watching us, is that, you know, Starr County is certainly very grateful that we were allowed to join the MPO with Cameron and Hidalgo, because that's where the big bucks are. You know, when you work as a region and the MPO is just that, you know, where, you know, we can still apply for projects, for paving projects in the county, but the big projects, for example, the interchange on 281 and 83. Raina.
Yeah, can I have one? Can I have one?
Oh, I'm so smart.
It's okay.
You know, those are hundreds of millions of dollars that are needed. And if it's not for an MPO, the odds of us getting any of that money becomes very, very, almost nil, you know, we're not going to get it. So we're certainly very grateful that we're part of MPO, and we certainly thank you for what you all do.
You're very welcome, sir. So if everybody can turn to the page that says major planning documents? I think it's maybe the fourth page, or third page. Okay, so as part of our requirements is that we have to develop several planning documents, and these are all major documents that are required of every MPO. The very first one is the Unified Planning Work Program. This is a two-year plan that the MPO develops in coordination with Techstock and the FHWA. This essentially lists what the MPO will be doing for the next two years. So as an example, and I'll talk about it later in the presentation, we are hoping that the Policy Board will approve an agreement, an interlocal agreement between us and the Texas A&amp;M Transportation Institute, to do a traffic model for all our ports of entry. The next one is the Public Participation Program. This is a plan that identifies how the MPO engages with the public with regard to all these major planning documents, to include how we communicate with them in the development of the long-range and the short-range plan. The Metropolitan Transportation Plan is the long-range plan, and this is the document that governs the MPO projects with a minimum of a 20-year horizon. The next one is the TIP, we call the Transportation Program. This is the first four years of the long-range plan. And this is where we really have the demonstration of programming projects that need federal assistance. And the last one, because the size of the MPO, and this is really a functionality of population, but this is a congestion management process. This is a process that we identify strategies to reduce congestion. So let me just take a minute here to explain this, is that at the national level, there is what we call the Clean Air Act. And we are required, in the event that we become non-attainment, meaning we don't meet a component of the Clean Air Act, that we have to do additional steps as required by the federal government. In the event that we become non-attainment, TCQ is monitoring this, is for a particular matter of 2.5 microns or less. So this is a very fine dust that can actually go into our lungs, correct? And one of the things that we're trying to do now is with all the efforts in the Unified Planning Work Program, is to do planning sketch tools or studies to identify what the MPO needs to be doing today. Because in the event that we become non-attainment, the cycle will be is that if it were to happen today, two years from now, they would develop a state implementation plan, and then that plan kind of dictates the boundary that we would have to operate to demonstrate that we meet the requirements. With that, there are some MPOs that are non-attainment, for example Dallas or Worth, Houston, El Paso, and then now San Antonio is going to have that requirement. You do receive funding in addition to that, but the reality of it all is that the congestion management process becomes effective. So now that if we want to build a new freeway, as an example, we have to use part of the strategies that are within that scope of the process, right? So one example would be buses. The other example would be technology. So whenever you're traveling and you see those big signs on the freeway that they tell you X amount of miles, things of that nature, or dynamic tolling, things of that nature, correct? But these are just strategies that we have to demonstrate that are being incorporated as part of a new roadway project. On the following page, which is titled Funding, this is a breakdown of our major planning documents, the MTP, which is a long-range plan, the TIP, which is a short-range plan, and the Unified Transportation Program, which is the Techstock plan. So earlier when I talked about how we are programming our projects in terms of the federal dollar, from a roadway infrastructure, it's about $7 billion, but then when you look at the UTP program, again, it's about anywhere between 32.4 to 32.5 million dollars a year. Okay? If you all go to the next page, and this one should have the 10-year plan histography. The earlier comment that I had mentioned about our plan being over-programmed, it gives you a snapshot, right? So this is the first 10 years of the current plan, right? And so it covers a timeframe of fiscal year '26 through 2035. But what I want you to note is that there is a line that starts in '27 and it dips, and then it kind of plateaus. The two bars that you see, actually three bars that you see, is an indication where the MPO Policy Board elected to overprogram, okay? Now, the consequence to this is that at the federal level, the Federal Highway Administration, along with the Federal Transit Administration, will look at this and weigh the opinion of any type of consequence, right? But the reality of all is that because we are overprogrammed, and then we have no way of understanding where our projects are, we always have money carrying from one year to the next. So we had about, I think it was about $102 million, maybe a little bit more, that was overprogrammed over a three-year period. So what happens in this case is that we exceed the 200% rule. And the state can come in and say, we're going to flex that money out, and then we're also going to take from the pot of Techstock, from the category two, from infrastructure, and then put into safety projects. So you could see, it's almost like a three-way, you know, consequence, where we're not only, we're not able to ensure that our Techstock projects are moving forward, but all our projects get kind of put on hold, okay, until we do this. So what we did is that, if you turn to the next page, we had a call for projects. And so this call for projects is directed really by the need, as identified by staff, to the Policy Board. But in order for us to understand the priorities of developing the 10-year plan, we needed to understand that the Policy Board and all its members understood what are the eligible elements under this type of funding. So this category seven is our bread and butter, as they say. We get $32.4 to $32.5 million a year. And so we wanted to make sure that, again, not only from those that do their projects from a municipal county level, but also transit. There's projects here that are eligible under transit. So after we had this call, and if you go to the next page, we were able to demonstrate to the Policy Board that after having this call for projects, that we were now meeting the 10-year requirement, and this is scenario B, after having the call for projects, and it's a little bit more focused in terms of the projects that were submitted, and then how we distributed the 10-year requirement through this type of phrase, in terms of the projects, and then to ensure that our graphs, if you show that the bar graphs, don't exceed that 32.4 or 32.5 threshold. So essentially here, what the Policy Board was able to demonstrate to the federal partners that we're meeting the 10-year requirements, it's in line with the Techstock Unified Transportation Program, and that we are not overprogrammed. And so the Policy Board did take action to approve the 10-year plan. And the next page? The next page demonstrates some of the elements that I talked about in terms of when a project is nominated to the Policy Board, is that the Policy Board now requires an electronic project request form, a project schedule, a financial summary, and then of course, a project schedule. All of these elements is what feeds us to develop the project readiness report. So you can have a project that you don't know what the scope is, but understand that there's a need. And so when this gets submitted to the MPO, the Policy Board will be informed through the Technical Advisory Committee of what the request is, but I think more importantly, it lets MPO staff know what the need is. And as an example, we were in La Guia about a week ago, and we did a short tour to see where potentially sidewalks could be built, as an example, right? So under this funding category and other stuff that we have as part of our program, we can identify those financial resources for you all, right? So the idea is for us just to understand what the need is, and then from there, we will help you develop the project. Okay? Are there any questions regarding to the process in this current page?
Any questions?
The next page is the project readiness report. And so I apologize, it's a bit small, but we can actually send you the one that is like this, and it's a larger scale, I think it's 11 by 14. But essentially, what it does is that it identifies the project in terms of what we call the control section job, the CSJ. This is an accounting number that Techstock subscribes to. When you sign the advanced funding agreement with Techstock, this is how you get this number. And then it tells us exactly where the project is programmed in, when it's going to let, the project description, and then what you see on the far right-hand side is the actual status of it. In the presentation, all this is color-coded. And so we have a red, amber, and green indication to let the Policy Board and the public know where your project is at. In the presentation as well, there is a field that is purple, and that is for right-of-way release letters. And so ultimately, what we are trying to inform the Policy Board at every quarter, the status of said projects. And again, the idea here is just to ensure that we're tracking the projects to make sure that they let within the prescribed time. Is there any questions or comments regarding the project request? The next page, what we wanted to do was simply highlight probably the largest project that is programmed in our planning documents is the State Loop 195. And so what I mentioned earlier about the congestion management process is that in the event that this was a new project, we would have to just identify strategies to go along with the development of what we call an added capacity project. But I think that what I wanted to express to you all is that when I examine the planning activities for every municipality, county, or even the RMA, it's the Regional Mobility Authorities, I look at the amount of investment, correct? So I'll just use as an example. When I look at the city of Brownsville, I would assume the city of Brownsville, being the largest city in Cameron County, would have a high percentage of projects that are being nominated to the MPO. In the first 10-year plan, the city of Brownsville has zero projects. Okay, so that could be a policy decision in the city of Brownsville, but as a transportation planner, right, they have roads, they have intersections, they have transit. So I think that there wasn't a lot of effort when the Policy Board merged from the city of Brownsville, as an example, this is just my observation, that either they didn't understand the MPO process, or they were just doing it on their own, which you could do, correct? But then you dip into your general revenue funds, where you can actually just use a match with regard to the MPO. So the MPO program is a reimbursable program. The federal government will give you 80 of the 100% that's being asked. And then once the project is rolled out, then you just, if you will submit all your receipts, correct, and then you get fully reimbursed. So I just wanted to highlight this, because one of the efforts that the MPO will be doing this February is that we're going to be sending an invite for another call for projects, and it could be a category seven, which would identify roadway needs, but then there's also another one that's called TASA. And TASA, what it deals with is mobility through sidewalks, trails, bicycle, things of that nature. And so please look out, and we'll send that communication like in January or February, to see that what the needs may be for the county, correct, and also for any of the municipalities that are within your jurisdiction. And then the final page, one of the things that I also had examined is the amount of ports of entry that are within the entire planning area of the MPO. And so in my previous experience is that when you develop a freight study, or you develop a freight plan, or you're trying to understand the movement of freight, right? And you would want to understand it from a mobility perspective, right? So essentially is that we're hoping to have an interlocal agreement with Texas A&amp;M, the Transportation Institute, to ensure that we develop a model that will simulate the ingress and the egress between all the major ports of entry within the MPO scope. This will do many things, correct? But I think the most important thing is that we will have various scenarios, and one of these scenarios is to understand the economic capacity that each port of entry has. We can also examine the port of entries in relationship to, is there justified need, or do we need to expand one? But what we also can do is shock the model, as we say. So if we were to close down several major ports of entry, what happens to the system? Where do they go? Okay? And then in my former employment, I was also the Executive Director for the El Paso Metropolitan Plan Organization, and one of the things that we did there is a very similar study. And we closed down the major port of entry. This port of entry carried, if you will, about over 80% of all the commercial goods and services. And so now, with the Policy Board, along with federal representation, they're going to close this port of entry. So now, there is one port of entry in El Paso that's going to take a lot of the redirection. But what I want to point out is that in the El Paso MPO area, that planning area also incorporates New Mexico. So it is the Santa Teresa port of entry, okay? And one of the benefits of that port of entry is that it doesn't cross water. So it is a true land port. So of course, here, if we want a new port of entry, we have to build a bridge structure. That becomes a lot more expensive. But the economic opportunity for New Mexico to capture and move forward way before or beyond the city of El Paso, or the El Paso region as a whole, is phenomenal now. Okay? So for us, luckily, we're not competing with New Mexico, but nonetheless is that we need to understand that any type of disruption to our ports of entry via freight has to be examined. And then that way, we can understand if one goes down, where does the other traffic go to, and we can plan accordingly. Does anybody have questions regarding the proposed modeling?
Any questions? Comments? Okay. Well, we certainly will be on the lookout for your, either January or February?
Sure.
Call for projects, and hopefully we'll have some.
Sure. And then one last thing I'd like to offer, we did have a training back in May, where we invited all the members. And one of the things that will be on the Policy Board's agenda on December 5th is for us to have a tour of the Policy Board. So what this means is that if the Policy Board allows us to do this, we are going to host at different cities, or even at different counties, the Policy Board itself, right? Because I think that it's very important, right, especially me coming from the outside, not only for me to understand what the region needs, but I think as elected officials, for you to understand. for you to understand what may be happening in the other communities, but also vice versa, correct? Because when we are looking at this, ultimately, we are competing for the same federal dollar, but I think that the Policy Board has to have a unified, you know, approach of funding big projects, correct? Because we only get so much, $32.4 million every year, and if there's a project out here, say a new port of entry, and if that new port of entry is 100 something million dollars, we're going to need everybody's help, right? So we'll develop a plan, and then in February as well, we were hoping to develop a strategic plan that will identify these big funded projects, because the idea is for us now to represent the entire Valley in Austin before the Texas Transportation Commission, kind of to show them what we've done, because we've been in the red, if you will, and now that we're serious about how we're approaching our planning activities. So if there's no other questions, that concludes my presentation.
Well, again, thank you, Mr. Medina, for coming by and sharing this information with us, and we certainly will be on the lookout to hopefully submit some projects.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on with our agenda, item number nine is an action item, is to approve a modification to a technical assistance agreement between the NAD Bank and the county and city of Roma. Rose, you want to?
We can take care of this one, Judge. Good morning, Your Honor. Good morning, Commissioners. This morning, we actually have this item on the agenda, because as you know, the actual engineering work has started on the suspension bridge. We have multiple engineering firms, both on the US and Mexican side, that are working on the preliminary details necessary in order to know whether the bridge can be reinforced, whether it can be utilized, and what needs to happen in order to do that. On the Mexican side, if everyone remembers, NAD Bank had provided some fundings to allow these engineering studies to happen, which for the most part are fairly complete. What is not complete are going to be the initial follow-ups that are going to be necessary once the US side does their work, which they're doing as swiftly as possible in the interest of time and as efficiently as possible, so that some of those dollars on the earmark can actually be used for some of the construction and upgrades necessary. At this point, what is before you on the agenda is a modification to the Technical Assistant Agreement, which basically is the agreement that was entered into NAD Bank in order to utilize their funding. There is no change in dollars, there is no change in anything other than an extension in time, which is necessary to be able to meet the work that is done. I think the agreement you entered in May, it was a short-term agreement, which they fulfilled, but they're asking to push it to March 31st, 2026, so they have ample time to not only complete their work, but be able to revise the US side and then move forward on providing the plan to do those upgrades, both for the suspension bridge and the potential extra lane on the concrete bridge that exists. And this, of course, is for the Starr County International Bridge.
Yeah, what this modification is, is like Rose says, is just to extend the time to March 31st. Moved in second to approve, discussion?
Judge, we do have the original document that requires your signature. Can, wait, you got it there? Okay, perfect.
Honorable fair, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Next item. It's also an action item, and this is an inter-local agreement between the Regional Public Defender's Office and County Starr. What this is, is the agreement, we've had it before, and this is for, I believe is a capital murder, it's with an outfit out of Lubbock, and, you know, for capital cases. It's just an insurance, hopefully we never use it, but if it does, you know, a capital case, lawyers can run up to a million dollars if we're not careful. So this is just an insurance that they will take care of, any capital case that we have in Starr County. Moved in second to approve, discussion? It's a renewal. Any other question? Honorable fair, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. And the fee is standardized according to population, and all the counties have a certain fee. Item 11 is also an action item, and this is to approve an inner fund loan from, I guess, the General Fund to Roden Bridge, Mr. Lenis.
Yes, I have just a small worksheet, and this is for the loan that I'm asking for. It includes all the things that are on the agenda for November, and I'm also estimating for December. At this point, I would like to request a million dollars to be set for the General Fund from the, which one is it? The Government Service Special Project Fund. I'm going to use those 1 million to split among the General Fund and the Roden Bridge, so I can be able to complete the payments that are shown there.
Moved in second to approve, discussion?
All right, thank you.
Honorable fair, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. And let me just explain for the people out there, what this loan is for is since we don't have a 3% discount, the cash flow at the end of, or at the beginning of our fiscal year is very slow. This money is from last start coming in until the end of December, 1st of January, so this is just to carry us over until those tax dollars start coming in. Item 12 is an action item, and this is to renew the Honitor's Contract with Mr. Adrian Webb for the county. Motion in second to approve. Are the fees about the same?
Actually, it is going to be between 85,000 to 90,000.
Where we're at?
We're at 60, 65,000. But I did come for whatever 65,000 and all the prices are maybe double the price.
Okay, I do have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Honorable fair, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Item 13 is along the same lines with Mr. Webb. This is for the International Bridge.
The prices on the International Bridge and the gas, it should not go up as much as the General Fund, but the Colonial White House.
Okay, I do have a motion in second for the bridge. Any further discussion? Honorable fair, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. And then item 14 is the same thing, and it's for the gas. Moved in second to approve, discussion? Honorable fair, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Item 15 is an action item, is to approve a permit application from Valley Telephone Co-op to trench and bore on state and county right-of-ways to approve communication in Medanitos and Santa Catalina Road.
Well, that's on the agenda.
You know, one thing that, and I brought this up at the last Commissioners' Court meeting, we can approve county right-of-ways, we have no approval for state right-of-ways. That has to go to the state. So, but as far as county, we can go ahead and approve. Are you representing Valley Telephone? Can you identify yourself for the record?
Morning, Commissioners. Do you overlook with Valley Telephone?
Okay, so, you know, one thing that we do want to make very clear is that we do not trench across where we have any paving. Those have to be
They're bored, yes, sir.
You know, you can trench along the side of the road, but not underneath it.
Correct.
Okay?
Correct, yes, sir.
Is that, are you okay with that, Commissioners? Do you want to make that a motion?
Second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion? Honorable fair, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Item 16 is an action item. Thank you. And it's to approve a resolution to authorize for the submission of the CDVG Construction Fund Money.
Good morning, gentlemen. It's for the Colonial Construction Fund for the new FY 2026.
Moved in second to approve, discussion? Honorable fair, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. And item 17 is an action item, and this is to request a loan from General Fund in the amount of 61,244 for purchase of patrol units and equipment, including installation for, I guess, sheriff's vehicles for Operation Lone Star, and this is reimbursable. Moved in second to approve, discussion? Honorable fair, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Item 18 through 22 are budget amendments. Moved in second to approve, discussion? Honorable fair, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. 23 and 24 are budget corrections. Moved in second to approve, discussion? Honorable fair, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. And item 25 is an action item, well, I take it back. Pursuant to Section 551.074, we will now go into executive session to discuss order of salaries. It is 10:42. It is 11:30, and we're back in open session. We only had one item that we discussed, and it was order of salaries.
Motion to approve, with the exception of discussing executive session.
Moved in second, discussion? Honorable fair, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Moved in second, Honorable fair, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. It'd be as that, no more questions, Commissioner.